I'd like to call and order the May 20th meeting, regular meeting of Powhatan County Board of Supervisors. Uh, Mr. Powers, could you do the pledge of allegiance and Mr. Kenny do the invocation, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Amen. Request to postpone agenda items and additions, deletions, or changes in order presentation?
Motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
This is approved. County Administrator updates.
Uh, yeah, so we've got a number of events and things happening in the county coming up, uh, to make you aware of. Uh, one, this is not a county meeting, but whenever we have a rezoning proposal, uh, our ordinance requires the applicant hold a community meeting to introduce their project. Uh, there is a proposal, a branchway development, um, so they're having a community meeting on their project this Wednesday at 6:30. Um, there was some concern about, uh, if the library could fit everybody, uh, so they're going to be moving it to this room. Um, so I believe, know this will be going out about that, but for anybody that's tuning in, um, that library, it'll be in this, this room, uh, Wednesday at 6:30. Uh, then also Wednesday at 12 o'clock, uh, at the admin building, we're having our annual, uh, building inspection, uh, cookout. Uh, so that's something our building inspection department has started doing to raise awareness about building code. And, um, if you're a citizen or a contractor, if you just want to come by and get a free hot dog and, and say hi, or talk to some of our inspectors or plan reviewers. Um, again, you're, you're more than welcome to stop by. Uh, this Friday at 1 o'clock, having the grand opening of our DMV in the admin building, uh, in the commissioner revenues office. So as most people know, it's already open, but now we'll be doing like the official unveiling and ribbon cutting. Uh, so Friday, uh, 1 PM in our admin building. Uh, June 14th to 16th is, uh, Powhatan Field of Honor here, um, rescue squad facilities, um, in the village. And then, uh, June 22nd in the Pocahontas Landmark Center is going to be a Juneteenth celebration. That's it.
Thank you, sir. You could do a presentation.
Yep, uh, and so tonight we'll, uh, start working on our, our long-term CIP capital improvement program. And so we have David Rose from, uh, Davenport, our financial advisor, uh, will walk us through, uh, some of the projects on our CIP and, and some options for how we could fund those. Um, so no, no real decision tonight, this is just start of the discussion, uh, except that, uh, schools, some of their projects, particularly, uh, high school projects. There is some urgency to that because we would like to be able to, uh, design bid, procure those projects in time, uh, to do them over, uh, when school's out. Um, so we have longer to work on some of these and put them together, uh, we would like to be able to do some of those sooner. And we've talked with Davenport and schools about some ways that we could get access to the funding on those specific parts, uh, sooner to get them going. But, but otherwise, again, not necessarily looking for a decision tonight, just kind of continue to chart our path forward and make sure we're working in the right way as we go to complete some of these projects. Uh, and then also, uh, they brought forward an opportunity to possibly, uh, refinance some of our existing capital debt out of savings. We'll be talking about that as well.
Thank you, uh, Brett, Mr. Chairman, members of board. Again, David Rose, I've been here over the years and, uh, Kyle Laux, who's been my colleague and young partner, uh, is not able to make it tonight. So I'll try to do my best, um, and, uh, Austin Sacks is, uh, even younger than Kyle. Uh, but he is, uh, here to keep both of us, uh, on the straight and narrow. But, uh, again, do you all have a copy of our presentation? If not, we brought extras just in case. Okay, um, and we can always leave some for the audience. Anything that we have is certainly, uh, fully provided to the, to the public.
Yeah, and we, we've included a packet, so it's, uh,
Okay, that's great. So with that said, um, and please just, just cut me off and stop me and, uh, but I'll try to move somewhat quickly. Uh, but again, I hope this is, as, uh, as Ms. Chardine said, this is meant to be a discussion and start a conversation. Um, it's important to recognize, we are your financial advisor, so we do not have, uh, a dog in a fight. We do not tell you which projects to do, we don't tell you when to do them, uh, but rather we try to give you some perspective on what the impact of doing these things will be. And then also, uh, try to show you what could be perhaps the more strategic ways to do these projects if and when you decide that's what you want to do. So I want to make that clear, especially for those in the audience. I think you as a board know that already, but I just want everyone to know that. So that said, um, on page one, and I think you're going to scroll through, is that it? Um, again, we've been your financial advisor for a number of years. Um, have, haven't always been as active as sometimes, but, uh, it has been active of late. Um, and we've been asked to look at effectively, uh, what you put together, uh, as a 10-year capital improvement program from FY '25 to '34, and that has a variety of projects, we'll talk about that. Um, but we've been asked to look at that from what I'll call a perspective of affordability and capacity. Capacity is theoretical, uh, affordability is where the rubber meets the road. How do you pay for some of these things and when do you have to pay for some of these things? So we're going to talk about that in the next few minutes. Okay, if you would turn the page. So, um, as we understand it, right now, and I'm going to round off here, there's about $157 million of capital needs that have been identified and provided to us. And what you could see here is that there is a fair amount, and fair meaning a lot, of needs in the first five years. In those first five years, there's roughly about 25 million that tie into what we'll call the general county projects. And then there's another 55 million of basically school projects. And again, provided to us to look at this, and that's what we're going to do. So even more all told, but again, 157 million are the needs. Now, if you go to the next page, what you'll see here is of that 157 or so million, about 122 million has been identified as being debt funded of one shape, form, or another. And of the 122 million, almost two-thirds of that, some 80 million, has at least been identified for the next five years. So put this in perspective, the county today has about 85, 90 million, roughly speaking, of debt outstanding. So the next five years could literally double that amount. So we're talking about, again, a good amount of debt. So we want to be careful that everybody understands what the capacity to take care of that is. Okay, so let's go to the next page. I mentioned a few moments ago, or a couple of minutes ago, the projects, the type and percentage, basically roughly half of that are schools. And the others are divided amongst various things like public works, park and rec, public safety, and utilities. And that's the total of 157. Let's go to the next page. So, and you'll see this in a moment when I go into a minute moment, a few minutes, um, about some refunding opportunities. One of the things we do as your advisor is look at regularly, if interest rates are coming down, is there an opportunity to save money? We see an opportunity. That's because when you look at the left-hand side, um, roughly about the time I started in this business in 1980, interest rates were just going the wrong way. They were high and they were getting worse. You may recall, uh, some of, you may recall that, but today, um, they have basically moved down. They're not at the rock bottom of where they were when COVID hit, but they have been very much competitive. And you see that on the right-hand side, uh, very much in the sub-4% long-term rates. And that again, by historical standards, is basically 10 percentage points below the highs of 14%, if not more, back when, again, the early eighties were happening. Okay, so the next page is very interesting, and this is important. Um, well, it looks like the Loch Ness monster on the left-hand side, um, really does, uh, you know? So what this shows is that when you're able to, and I think you see this with your budgets, when you're able to borrow money, or some of the monies that are sitting right now in your various fund balances, you're actually able to earn a very strong interest rate on those monies. This isn't particularly important because one of the things that we're going to talk about in a few minutes is how you might want to look at doing some borrowing. And that is because right now, if we were to borrow money, we can borrow on a tax exempt basis. We, meaning the local government. That's one of the things the federal government allows local governments to do, is borrow on a tax exempt basis. But we're allowed to turn around as a local government and earn what's called a taxable rate. And those are nothing more than US Treasury obligations and average. And so we're able to earn more than what we're borrowing at, okay? That's called arbitrage, but we can earn that, and it could be very efficient, meaning that if we borrow some money and we spend it over two or three years while we're sitting on that money and we're paying, let's say, 4%, we're allowed to earn 4%, anything more, we've got to give back. But the idea is we're able to earn what we pay, and that's very efficient and something we think about. That wasn't the case two years ago. As you could see, you were earning almost nothing. So we had to be smart about how we borrowed money. And again, that's part of the, the, if you want to call it, the way we look at things as your advisor. Okay, next page. So with this five years of proposed needs, that roughly 80 million of, we'll call it debt-related needs, there are really two parts to that, bonds and leases. Um, what's the difference? Bonds are longer term, leases are shorter term. The leases tend to be more for equipment, things like that, that turnover. So the important thing, when we borrow for local governments, is that we never borrow longer than the useful life. So if something has, obviously, when we did your high school, we didn't borrow for 60 years, even though hopefully it'll last that kind of years. But we still borrowed so that when the bonds are due, meaning when they're finally paid off, you still have that facility as a viable entity. When you do leases, for example, for things like trucks or cars or things like that, we tend to do those in a five or seven-year mode so that as those things in effect wear down and depreciate, we are not paying any more dollars than we need to, we're done with that, and we can move to the next iteration, if you would, of those different pieces of equipment. So we've done two scenarios, and this is what we wanted, just again, and you may say to us tonight, I want you to do something else, look at some other ways. We certainly can do that. That's why this is meant only as education. But on scenario one, what we did, working with staff, was we said, okay, let's do something very conventional. Let's just go permanent financing right up front for all the bonds and the leases. But then we said, let's try a second scenario. What if we do some interim financing for the bonds? Because a lot of these projects are just in developmental process, we don't know exactly what they're finally going to cost, all those kind of things. And then we said, but for leases, because they're very short and we know what they are, we'd still do permanent financing for the leases. So we have two different strategies. These are not the only ways to look at this, I want to make that clear. But it's two ways of thinking about this, just to give you in a few moments, a sense of what they might mean for your future budgets. And that's really what we're talking about here. We're not talking about the 25 fiscal year budget. We're really talking the 26 fiscal year budget and then beyond. So that's how, and that's where we are tonight. So we're not in a fire drill mode by any means, we're really here in a very early mode, I think, to think about how you look at all your, your various projects. Okay, go to the next page. Um, these are just the assumptions that we made for all these different debt pieces. So what I will point out is we are purposely conservative. You heard me say a few moments ago that we're looking at interest rates in the 4% range, higher, a little bit above, a little below. Yet, when we are doing this planning for you, we assume that the interest rate would be 5%. We've purposely added a percentage point to it, not because you're going to pay a percentage point higher, but rates could go against us over the course of a period of time. I'd rather be in a mode where I give you the worst case versus the best case. Best case is easy, worst case is more important because you have to think about all this from that cash flow perspective. So that's why I point that out. Similarly, the seven-year repayment, we did 5% as well. Do I think it's going to be 5%? If we were going into the marketplace today, would it be 5%? No, it'd be considerably lower. Again, I'd rather be in that mode, but if you want us to look at it a little differently, we certainly can do that for you. And then the interim financing was equally conservative. That interim financing, we said, what if we do something that basically is set up for two or three years? Think about that five-year program, we do a couple of three years of borrowing some money, and we said, let's assume it's at four and a half percent. I think it's going to be a solid percentage lower than that, but again, once again, I want to be conservative. Okay, last thing, everything we tie to when we talk about the impact, we say it's the equivalent of certain pennies on the real estate tax rate. And you've probably seen my colleague give that to you before, and that basically, we have used $570,000 for the penny. We've got a couple of scenarios here, one of which we didn't grow the penny at all, one of which we've grown it at 3%. Just want to get a sense of how that impacts things. Whatever really grows, it'll be what it is, if it grows at all. But again, history has shown that 3% has been closer to the, just a natural inflation rate. Although the last year or so, it's been considerably higher than that. So let's go on, if we could, to the next page. And basically here, we've done some more conservative assumptions. You have, as you know, a capital projects fund, and you've got some fund balance in that. Well, we may believe you don't have a capital projects fund for this analysis. We purposely put that to the side. Similarly, you also have a general fund capital maintenance reserve. So you do a very good job, you and your staff, do a very good job of keeping some reserves, continue to build those reserves. We have acted as if all of those things will not be a part of helping in the cash flow of this. You can come back to us and say, what if we do a little bit of that to help? Certainly, it'll only make what you're going to see look better. But we purposely, again, wanted to see if those dollars were not there, what's the impact? And then lastly, right now, we have said that the debt service for fiscal year '25, the one that's about to occur starting July 1, is, and you can see there, 10,255,378. We've used that to say, make believe that we have those dollars as the recurring dollars. Because that's what you've got in your budget for this fiscal year coming up. We've said, if we keep that steady, what do we need over and above that amount of money to take care of these capital projects? So that's the point here. Now, that 10,255 is taken care of, of the, basically that 89 or 80, 80 some odd million of debt of principal that you have. So you pay your debts off very quickly, and we're going to talk about that too. It's another strength of the county, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Okay, let's go to the next page, page 10. So I mentioned a moment ago that you have about 88, almost 90 million, and you can see that, that's the principal there. And it consists of a variety of things, general government, majority of schools, some water and sewer, and a little bit of capital leases. Now, having said that, you also see this statement that we have a 10-year payout ratio of approximately 85%. What does that mean in English? What that means is this, for those of us who are fortunate to own a home and have a mortgage, what it means is that if you think about a 30-year traditional mortgage, after 10 years, you have paid off roughly 25% of the principal. You, on the other hand, as effectively the mortgage holders for the county's debt, you have 85% is going to be paid off in 10 years. That's a really strong, strong number. It's as good as you'll get. So what it does is while looking at another 80 million is considerable, the reality is the debt is going to be paid off very, very quickly. So you're able to layer in new debt because, again, you're paying off the existing debt so quickly. And that's an important point, all right? You're not going to be in a mode where 10 years from now, you're going to have three-quarters of that 88 million. You're going to be down to basically about 15 million is all you're going to have left in a decade. So you're in a good position, and that's important. Okay, next page. So we run a whole lot of scenarios, a lot of things up there. Let me see if I could try to make sense of all this. What we did was to say, we're going to do, as we said earlier, some cash funding. So we'll pay some cash, but the balance is that 80 million or so, under scenario one or two, is roughly 80 million dollars. So what we then said is if we assume there's no growth in that penny, that penny stays at below $600,000, 570 is the number. What we need in this scenario one, general government, starting in 26 fiscal year, we need the equivalent of one and a half pennies. And then we need another penny after that, another penny after that, and a half. So all told, for the general government side, over the next roughly five years, we need about four pennies, the equivalent of four pennies. So think of it this way, 570,000 times four, or five, excuse me, times four, 570 times four, basically, is we need about $2.2 million to come up with eventually for the government side. On the school side, we need about seven and a half pennies. So you combine them all, and we need about 11 and a half pennies equivalent. So that's, that's, that's pretty daunting, um, again, with no growth. But on the right-hand side, our strategy was one of doing this interim funding, recognizing that we don't know exactly how fast we're going to spend all these dollars, and we know that we can reinvest what we borrow at the rate that we basically borrow at. And so if we do that, the general government side is three pennies, and the school side drops from seven and a half to five. So now we're talking about the equivalent of eight pennies. All right, let's go to the next page. If we take this approach,
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, so clarification question, when you talk pennies, are you talking about, so if our tax, current tax rate is .69, you're assuming no growth over the next 10 years, we would have to raise that by 11 cents?
First five years, let's, five years, yes, sir, not even 10, five years.
So we'd have to go from .69 plus 11 over the next five years, anticipating there's no growth in the county at all?
So let's go to the next page.
Okay, correct, I just wanted to clarify that from my own sanity, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, so let's go to the next page. Um, if you look at the next page, what happens is if we grow an average of 3%, it goes a little bit down to 10 and a half pennies. You see that, Mr. Kenny? Again, but the right-hand side, we go from eight down to seven. So again, and I think the important thing here is if you actually take a look on the right-hand side, what happens is like for the general government side, we need one and a half and then one more penny. So it's much more, I'll call it, uh, reasonable, you, you can kind of get your head around the equivalent at 3% growth. That's, that's an important point. And the second side on there, the schools, you need an initial pop of three pennies. Then it goes down to one and a half penny. In reality, again, given my experience, probably, you know, we're probably talking three to three and a half pennies is probably what will be necessary on the school side under this approach, probably won't need all four and a half pennies.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
The scenarios, are they additive, or are, are, you're going to do some interim and some of the, uh, both of these different scenarios you're going to be employing in the strategy you're going to recommend, is that correct?
Um, so in scenario one, we'll only do permanent financing, if that makes sense. But scenario two, we're doing both. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out the, the, in the second, pay 10 and a half pennies, uh, versus seven, is that additive?
No, no, it's separate, no, it's not, no, no, right, right, yeah. That's a great question, I'm glad you asked that question for everybody. No, it's either one approach is 10 and a half, other approach is seven. Not, not additive, no, sir. Okay, what is additive is we purposely, within each one of those, broke up general government and schools. We purposely wanted to see. So what happens is if you look at that scenario one, three and a half, and seven, that's 10 and a half. Those are additive to 10 and a half. Does that make sense? Because let's assume you say, you know what, I just want to do one or the other, or some combination, we can always look at that. And again, so, yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman? Oh, sorry, go ahead, Robert.
Would you see some combination of permanent and interim?
So that is really on the, the right-hand side, that's the scenario two. We call it interim and permanent, yes, sir.
But that's combined, okay.
That's right, and, and what I like about that, um, is, as I said, my experience has been over the years, nobody, meaning, and this is a big statement, but very few governments tend to spend the money as fast as they think they're going to spend it. Been my experience. So if we do interim financing, it's much less onerous cash flow-wise, okay? Plus, depending on how we do the interim financing, we could turn around, like I said, and be very efficient with the money we borrow. But the important thing is if I'm the schools, or I'm some of your folks in public works, I want to know that you have decided, if you want to decide to move forward with some project, I want to know the money's there. That's the beauty of the interim financing, the money will be there. Um, we don't just have to go directly to permanent financing. Now, somebody might say, well, what about the fact that rates are very strong right now, should we do the permanent financing? Yeah, we could do that, but the reality is we always have the ability to refinance, just like I'm going to talk to you about tonight. We always have the ability to do some other things. And again, remember, I purposely, with my colleagues, it's not me as a renegade here, I purposely didn't count some of those other reserves that you had that could further help kind of mitigate the equivalent pennies, if that makes sense.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Kenny.
So to help solidify some of these serios, scenarios for the board, Brett, do we have figures on the average growth for the county over the last five years?
Yeah, yeah, and we, and we have growth that we build into our model and, and make assumptions on as well, so.
So based on, based on that, can we redo some of those scenarios based on anticipated growth?
Sure, yeah, we could, uh, I mean, we could really, any, any numbers you want, we could advise you to some of them that maybe this is, we wouldn't go higher than this, we wouldn't go lower than this. But sure, I mean, we can, and that's kind of the purpose of the night, is we can play around with any of these. Or, um, if there's certain projects, if you want to say, I do want to pursue this project, but this one I want to put off two years, we can, we can move all those things.
I know my colleague, Mr. Powers, had come up with some, some really good numbers about CIP, what we should do now, what we shouldn't do now. And, and just in, I hate math, but in my feeble mind, it looks like we're stacking a lot of deck up front in the next five years, like 80 million dollars. Can we spread some of that out? Because I for one would not want to vote for 11 cent tax increase, um, to fund some of these CIP projects. So if we can build in some, some growth numbers and maybe, um, look at some of the things Robert proposed as far as moving CIP projects around without anything being affected in a negative way, um, I think that would put a lot of our minds at ease. Um, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
And Mr. Powers?
Yeah, just to speak to, to what Mr. Kenny was saying, I don't think we're talking about tomorrow, uh, if this is all approved, raising the taxes 10 and a half cents in the case of the permanent or seven cents and the interim, those are, you have those spread across that period of time.
That's correct, that's exactly right.
Not that tax increases are ever something that we want to do to our citizens, but if, if we can do it in a gradual fashion, uh, as opposed to, uh, something that's,
Yes, so,
a big shock to the system.
That's exactly right, you, I think you've, you've nailed it perfectly. And that is that when you look at it, for example, given what you've identified as it relates to, for example, in the general government side, look in scenario two, you're talking about doing roughly about $26 million of bonds and leases for the general government side, okay? Over the first five years, that equates to, you'd have to go, if you said yes to that next year, then what you'd be needing to do is the equi, under this scenario of growth, 3%, it'd be the equivalent of asking for one and a half pennies for the following year, and then one more penny the following year. So to your point, think about your 69 cents, if you look at the general government, If you look at the general government, you'd be saying, all other things being equal, assuming no other revenues come in, you're saying, well, if we're at 69, I need to go to basically 70, 70, 70 cents and another half cent. I need to go to 70 and a half cents is what would the change would be in the 26 fiscal year. And then if everything was equal, I need to go to 71 and a half in the six, in the 27 fiscal year. So to your point, it's a far cry from saying, I need 11 pennies immediately. That's correct.
Right, Mr. Chairman.
Good, Mr. Kenny.
But, but to my point, even the best case scenario you got here, scenario two, where it's seven cents, that means over the next five years, we've got to raise taxes seven cents. Now, you can do it a penny a year, but to me, that's like a frog in boiling water. You know, the citizens are still going to have to pay for it, they're still going to get, their taxes are still going to have to go up seven cents over the next five years in order to fund these projects as proposed. And that's assuming zero growth, correct?
Well, that's assuming 3% growth, that's 3% growth. And that also assumes, like I said earlier, that the interest rates that I've used are, are the interest rates, meaning I purposely have added to what that will be. It'll be, it, it would be, if we did this, more than likely, it'll be less than that. But I like the idea of building the cushion in. To your other point, though, and it's important, I want to make this clear for the board and for the citizens, I use the po, the words real estate equivalent, because again, this board, working with your staff, may say, you know what, there is another revenue source that we're going to be able to tap over the next five years, that right now is either not there or some other ways. That's important, because it's, this is just trying to do it for illustrative purposes, which you totally get. I mean, y'all, because the way you're talking to me and vice versa, you're showing you get what we're talking about clearly. It's, the equivalent of this could be like five or seven pennies. It's real, yes. So I think the takeaway, and you've got it, is 80 million dollars, we have to come up with some real new revenues over a five-year period. But we just don't have to, to Mr. Powers' point, I think, we don't need to come up with it all in 2026. That's, that's the important thing.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Good, Mr. Powers.
But to your point, uh, in the case of, on the interim, uh, scenario two, three pennies in 26 for schools. Those projects are priority one, priority two projects, based on the information we've gotten from the schools consultant. There, there are projects that, uh, are going to have to be done. So we're, we're looking, what I'm interpreting here, even if we move some of the projects out just a touch, we're still looking at, um, if we're going to do those projects for the schools specifically, we're looking at increasing taxes. And again, is that, is that, is that the, that's the bottom line there?
I, I think, I think that is the bottom line. I think there is going to be an element short of something, there is going to be some element of pain, if you would, um, to do this. But at the same time, that's why we're here, because there may be working with staff, there may be some priorities, any number of ways, but that's right. I mean, we're always, you know, my role for you and others is not to, not to tell you what you want to hear, it's what you need to hear. And part of it is.
We appreciate that.
And that, that's the way I look at it, you know? So, okay. So just a couple of things we did do on the next page or two, um, is we said to ourselves, you've got some policies for different debt levels. And all we wanted to show you is that under the permanent financing, under debt service versus expenditure, that means how big's your credit card? And what you basically have a policy that says that you're not going to exceed 15% of the debt service, which basically means 15 cents on every dollar of the budget, you want to be below that. And optimally, you don't want to be above 12%. Well, the good news, right now, you're about 9%, so you're in really good shape. If you did this structure with very little growth, you're going to be above the 12% within a few years. I don't like that. That's, that's, that's more than I like. But if you have your more typical, given the county, of 3% growth and it, and, and all, you're going to be within those policies, if you would, you're going to be within that policy. And then if you go to the next page, we've got another policy, which you're very comfortable within, that's sort of your debt level versus the county values, so I won't spend much time on that one. But let's go to page 15. I think this is important. On page 15, if we do that concept of interim financing and permanent combo, and we get that 3% growth, look at where you are, you're comfortably below your 12% policy. And that's important, that's real important. So I really believe, and that's again, and that's at interest rates, that at least for the moment, are above where the markets are. But again, rates could change and go above that. That's why we built that in. But I just wanted you to see, as part of all this, we've been thinking about this, and thinking about what this could look like over different, different assumptions, and it makes a difference. So again, while we're here, talk about these things, why we're here is to have you think after this, or even during this, and say, all right, we'd like to have the staff direct us to do some other things, to, to think about some other hybrid ways to do that. And then we can either come back or not, but that's, that's very much typical for us.
Mr. Chairman?
Good, Mr. Kenny.
Just curiosity question, so what is your interest rate projections based on? I mean, so say, for example, we have a change in administrations, the economy gets a lot better, rates start coming down, how does that affect, um, the rates that we pay?
So let me start by saying, even if I were an economist, which I'm not, um, I don't think it matters, because I don't think anybody really knows. However, what we do know is that there is this sense that there might be one more rate cut, but who knows? There's a sense of that. Now, having said all of that, um, you asked, what happens if rates come down? If rates come down, then the cost of all this debt is less, the equivalent penny is that much less. That's really what it means. Now, rates come down, that could also mean that Loch Ness monster might be a little lower, so you might earn less interest on some of your dollars. But you know, the interesting thing, though, is historically, that short-term money that, that Brett and basically Charlotte is making earnings on, that's kind of like the historic average. It's not like atypical. It wasn't typical to be at less than 1%. It's really the 5, 6% short-term rates, that's pretty normal by historical standards, just so you know. Now, we'll go back to what you asked. You know, I have no sense, whether it's a change in administration or not, the world's so fickle and all these things, all we try to do, what we're doing today, is say, you tell us what you want us to look at, and we'll give you a variety of scenarios and when it might have to happen. That's really all we can do. So I just, you know, I will say one little side, when I started in my career, I did, I was, I was younger, but I was at the same firm, um, as, as Jerome Powell. So he was, as, as the Fed chairman, and I worked the same place. But didn't mean we knew anything more than anybody else then either, so, so. And he's not an economist either, so. But that's, that's our presentation. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to answer any questions, or maybe, uh, anything I've said, maybe that's needs to be clarified.
So to open up the, uh, board questions or any more?
Mr. Chairman?
Good, Mr. Kenny.
So the 80 million dollars over the five, next five years, that's going to fully fund all the CIP projects that the schools want to do between, uh, over the next five years?
Yeah, so that's, that's, we plugged in the CIP exactly as we have it in our book, but again, there's, there's nothing to say, we need to do that. We can, we can do some projects sooner or later, move some of them out, take some of them off completely, but that's assuming we do it exactly as it's proposed in our current CIP book.
Right, and then, so in order to do that, we're going to have to build in tax increases each year in order to get that accomplished as well, correct?
And depending on how we borrowed for it, so we showed how it would be, you know, depending on the one, one cent this year, 1.5 the next, but if we bundled some of that, we would be committing ourselves to, so we could, we could break some of it up, where we're only doing a little bit at a time, but some of it, if we borrowed a larger amount, but even if it's not all coming due in that year, we'd be essentially committing ourselves to it. So, uh, yeah, that's part of this.
And then one last point, though, the, the main problem with putting off CIP projects, especially as the schools are concerned, is construction costs rarely go down. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Denadi?
Thank you for having the difficult conversation. This isn't easy. It's obviously not easy for us to hear, uh, but this is what we need to hear. It's not always easy, it's just necessary. So thank you for that, and, uh, we definitely, uh, respect and appreciate the ability to be real versus right. So, um, quick question, do any of these scenarios affect the bond rating?
Uh, great question. So some of those ratios that we showed, and some of the things you've got, um, we think all of those would keep your bond rating where they, where it is. So you've got two credit rating agencies right now, Moody's and Standard and Poor's, those are the two big rating agencies. And you have in both of them, you're in the strong double A category, which means you're one step away from the triple A, which is the highest you can have. So you're in good shape, but the answer is, uh, no, we, we see this as being prudent, meaning within your, within your white lines, if you would, of being able to do this. So the answer is, um, if we were to get downgraded, it would not be, we believe, by virtue of your debt portfolio, it could be other factors. And we can always talk about that, because debt is just one part of the, the credit rating.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Good, Mr. Powers.
Help me understand, um, the tax rate that we're talking about, the past clamoring some, by some citizens to be revenue neutral, and looking at some of the charts that some of your colleagues have presented in the, in the past relative to our reserves, and building those reserves to facilitate more pay-as-you-go out of operational cash flow. Comment on how we're doing there, and what, what your, what your advice would be generally?
So, so my advice is a couple of different things. Number one, let's go back to Mr. Denadi's question about keeping a credit rating. Having strong reserves is one of the best ways to keep a strong credit rating. It's the old saying, when you have money in the bank, people want to loan, loan you money, you know, when you don't, they don't. That's no different for any local government. The government that demonstrates that it has a real wherewithal to withstand hiccups in the marketplace and things like COVID and what have you, that's important. The way to do that, the rating agencies and this marketplace says, if you've got strong reserves, that unassigned fund balance, that's their term of rainy day funds, that's important. So number one, I'd like to see the county not only have that, but continue to grow those funds. The second point I would make for the citizens is that when you're raising those dollars and you're putting that in the unassigned fund, make it clear to the citizens, that's earning an interest rate. That's very substantial, that helps go back into the general fund. Those earnings are going right back into the general fund to make this equivalent pennies lower. That's important. A lot of people don't realize that. They think, well, you're just holding on to this money of the citizens. Well, that's not quite right. What you're doing is a couple of things. Number one is you're taking this money and you're reinvesting it, so you're putting money back into the general fund that's there recurring. Number two is it helps you with the credit rating, and with a good credit rating, you're able to borrow the money that you know you need to borrow for projects at better rates. And that's really important, because if I were to tell you, for example, we got involved a few years ago in Petersburg, they were in real trouble, they couldn't even find lenders, literally, at one of our biggest jobs. The cost of money to Petersburg back in 2016 was literally twice the level of what you would be borrowing at in 2016. That's really big, okay? It's gotten better, they've gotten a lot better, to their credit, but, and their credit's gone up. But the point is, we want to keep a really strong credit rating, we want to have really strong reserves and grow them, because they churn out more dollars. And then lastly, God forbid, you have something like, when I was a child, Hurricane Camille comes through, and even if you get FEMA dollars, they could take two, three years, you want to basically have dollars there as you need them. And that's important. So hopefully that answers some of that question about, you know, well, the way I see these things. But again, I, I'm not elected, so it's easy for me to say, grow these reserves, do these things, what have you. But I do think what we're trying to do is make sure that this county is sustainable for the long run, and that's why these ratios and policies you're in compliance with, we want to see you stay in compliance with those policies, and want to see the credit ratings stay real strong.
Mr. Chairman, one more, if I could.
Good, Mr. Powers.
Our friends in the, on the school side, um, are faced with some pressures and some requirements that, that they face, um, we face them too on the county side, but not to the same degree, of underfunded and unfunded completely mandates that they are obligated by law to, to, to take care of. And so the facility issue that we face now is the result of, of years of having to deal with those under an unfunded mandates. And as the superintendents have passed, have looked at a dollar bill, they say, well, gosh, you know, I've got these laws I have to take care of, so the HVAC and the roofs can wait a little bit. And before you know it, 20 years have passed and we're in this situation. Not for tonight, but I, I would appreciate some advice from you and, and from Davenport in terms of how we can go about establishing funds, setting earmarking funds, um, so that we have a, a sinking fund, a rainy day fund specifically to address facilities. Otherwise, our colleagues who sit here in 10 or 15 years will face the same, exact same problem. And, and that's just not fair to, know, knowing that that would be the case, fear to let that happen.
Right, well, like Mr. Denadi said, I, I appreciate those comments, and I really do, I've been doing this so long, that, you know, it's a difficult, you know, you know, I always wonder why y'all do this, because, you know, you put yourself up there for incredible amount of, you know, you know, punishment, but, but at the same time, you're right, if you want to set up some type of sinking fund, and that's what makes a lot of sense, uh, and it does, uh, you've got some of these capital reserve management, you've got that now, the key is, can you try to enhance those and have those, because you already, you've, you've set those up, that's important. This county's done a good job, you've set those up, but the key is try to even add to them. Like I said, you've got right now, for the moment, in that five-year period, there's some 20 million dollars of cash funding that's being planned. That's a good number, that's a solid number, just the citizens know. Most counties don't have that luxury of doing 20% or so of their, of their capital needs over a five-year period through cash. They don't, uh, but that's good.
Mr. Chairman?
Good, Mr. Kenny.
So Charlotte, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we're going to borrow money for CIP projects, you control those dollars, correct? So if the school, if the state came up with a law, like you gotta fund this position, they can't use this money for that purpose, correct? Okay, thank you.
All my questions were answered by everybody, so, um, Mr. Denadi had the best one about the bond rating staying the same, so I'm really happy about that. And I think y'all been with us for like 18 or 19 years, I think, so y'all.
You mean, I, 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 a little longer than that. I, I, and I go back to Steve Owens days, so, I don't know, maybe 25, 30 years or so. Well, I helped you all get your first bond rating, so.
Appreciate what you do.
I was involved with that, so, yeah.
And David and Austin, thank you for all your work, and everybody else that was involved from your team, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Good, Mr. Kenny?
Were you going to cover the potential?
I was going to do one more, maybe, maybe a little positive, how's that?
Yeah, we need some positive.
Okay, a little positive, you know? All right, so we have a, a, another one about the refunding? Okay, this will be a lot shorter, I think I'll just, I'll cut to the chase and go to, basically page two at the very bottom. Part of what we do as your advisor is to monitor your debt portfolio. We've been doing that, and we've been working closely, particularly Kyle and Austin with Charlotte and then Brett, uh, on refunding opportunities. So let me make it clear, when we talk about refundings here, we don't talk about extending the debt at all, we just talk about exchanging current higher interest rate for a lower interest rate. That's how we look at it. So we'll make that clear, that's what we mean by refunding opportunities, not pushing debt out. So with that said, um, go to page three, this is somewhat like what we showed you a few minutes ago, rates have come down. And so rates have come down, we've got an opportunity, and we want to just have you be aware of that, and actually take no action tonight, but hopefully take action at the next board meeting, as you kind of get a little comfortable. So let me give you a sense of, if we go to page five, what we've looked at. We have looked at that portfolio, as I said, apparently exactly moment in time, the previous page had, previous section had 88 million, well, now, at the end of 6:30, June 30th, the next few weeks, we'll have about 87 and, and million, 87 and a half million dollars. But there are a couple of pieces that do make sense as refundings, and they're in that dark green there. So the next page. So, the next page, so this will roll it all up in a minute, make it easy for you. We've got two particular bonds. And interestingly enough, um, the average interest rate on those together, a little over 4%. You notice I said earlier, I was looking at 5%. This is going to be going even lower than that if it works. So, again, I put conservative assumptions in there. But these two bonds collectively are about 12 and a half million of your roughly 88 million or so of your portfolio. So, it's not a large part of your portfolio, but it's a real part of your portfolio. And again, all we're trying to do is say, interest rates have come down. And if they stay down, you also have a policy. The policy that you've got, which is really a statewide standard, state does it, local governments informally have it, some have it formally, that say, anytime you have what we call 3% or higher net present value. What that really means is that's after paying guys like me and underwriters and all those people. If you can go above 3%, fix it, then it makes sense. It's considered a bona fide refunding. This is to get away from, or think of it this way, when I was younger, it's sort of like the old cars, you know, you could borrow and get a, and get a car with no money down, but the rate could be real high. This is that APR. This is that truth in lending, what's it mean? So, that, what it means, and I'll show you in a moment, is right now, if you go to page seven, right now, that APR, if you would, is about four and a half percent. You're saving about four and a half percent. And that's after cost of issuance because that's disingenuous not to do it that way. You've got to do it that way. So, that's the way we look at this. So, on the right-hand side, if rates were to hold where they are right now, your all-in cost of money would be about 3.3%. That's what the TIC, that means the true interest cost. It means that all in. So, again, put this in perspective. This is debt that goes out, this goes out basically about a dozen years. So, interest rates, as I said earlier, I was looking at leases and I was using 5%, whereas 12-year money is out at 3.3%, which is why, again, we know and feel good about opportunities for you at the right time. But rates could go higher. So, the approach here would be that we would like, if you go to the next page, to have you continue to look at what we call the Virginia Resource Authority. One of the pieces of debt is already there that we did years ago. Another piece would be introduced and be done simultaneously by them. So, effectively, you get the economies of scale. That's how to think about it. So, you're not paying twice. You're paying once, you're getting that benefit. One of those pieces was a direct bank loan that we did that has favorable call provisions. We set that up years ago with the hope rates would go down. And that's what they've done. May not stay down. So, here's the approach that we're asking for. And if you go to page nine, well, actually page 10, it's page nine right there, last page, here's what we're, we're thinking about. The VRA application is due right around now. At the same time, if we can get this board to approve at your June 24th meeting, a resolution that talks about the minimum savings, 3% or higher, which is your policy. And then the sale is supposed to be about a month later. If the rates don't meet that criteria, then you just don't go forward. You, meaning the county, would not be a part of that financing. What they do is a big pool. They do lots of local governments all at one time. Some borrow new money, as we call it. Some do refunding, some do combination. For you, it's just refunding. You're not adding to your debt, you're not extending your debt. You're just trying to selectively take certain pieces of debt that may be candidates and see if they can be, again, exchanged for lower rates. So, that's our approach. And again, we won't know what will happen until that late July, when they go to the marketplace. We'll have a sense going in there, but if rates are going higher, chances are, we won't be doing your financing. And we don't do it anyway, but I'm saying, you know, we'll be underwritten. But you set the parameters at the next meeting saying, nothing under 3%. And that's pretty standard. That's what we're suggesting. So, with that said, um, Mr. Chairman, any members, I'd like to answer any questions I can.
Mr. Chairman. The 740 is net your fees?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, and?
And all the fees, meaning whether it's our fee, whether it's legal counsel that puts documents together. Yes, we factored in dollars for all of that.
Okay, so they're not front-end loaded, they're, they're spread across the, the entire period here that you show?
But they're already, they're already taken out.
Taken out.
They're already, so that number, for example, the right-hand side, that right-hand side that, let's say, had $60,000, that's after.
After fees.
Yes, sir.
Other general question, um, the two scenarios that we've gone over before, comparing certain scenario one to two, what would we expect the transactional, incidence of transactions with Davenport between the two?
We actually, I think that's a great question, Mr. Powers. So, I would think that we're talking about an upfront interim financing or an upfront permanent financing for the bonds. So, one and one. And then we're looking at, the leases will be permanent either way, one time over the five years. So, what would happen then is to answer your question exactly, in the second scenario, the one that has less impact, there would be then a subsequent permanent financing that whether we do or someone does, probably three or four years later. So, we would, in both instances, be doing a financings upfront. And then in this, in the second scenario, there'd be a second financing, probably three or four years later.
So, a little higher transactional incidence of transactions between the county and you. You know, I'm, I'm perfectly happy to, to pay you a fair fee and you, because you do, you do good work for the county. So, don't, don't take umbrage with what I'm suggesting. It, it's just, you know, every time we churn or every time we do something, refinance or whatever, there are fees involved and we, we need to try not to be mindful of those and keep them, keep them in check.
That's your job. That's absolutely, and we understand that.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, Mr. Kenny.
Sharla, so if we, if we, so we, we pursue this refunding opportunity, they give us a number, I think it was around $740,000. Does that money have to go to anything specific? Could we use it for funding firefighters or?
You wouldn't be getting cash. It would be lowering your payments throughout the rest of the, the time. So, the savings is actually the built-in debt service payments. So, we wouldn't actually, we wouldn't get that money, but it would lower our payments, so.
Well, it's no fun.
I know, I'm sorry.
So, we don't actually realize cash money that we could put in a general fund or use towards this or that?
I mean, it would, it would lower our budgeted debt service the next year. So, that would free up some dollars for something else, whatever the board deems they want to use that money for, or we could use it for something operational. Because that is in our operational budget. So, that would be from recurring dollars, not one time.
So, in essence, we could kind of use it in incorporating the next fiscal year 26 budget.
Well, it would only be for the one, the difference of the one year. You know, you're looking at a, you know, 10, 12 years. Right, but you'd get a little bit every year. You wouldn't get 740 in one year.
Right, but, but we'd still realize them some savings when we went to do the analysis for next year's budget and then that savings could be used.
For something in the operational budget or towards, uh, towards the debt service that we layer in would help offset that as well, you know, so.
So, we do, we do reap some tangible benefits from, for, as far as a budget goes for the county.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, Mr. Powers.
The, Charlie, just, yeah, great, no, that's fine. The, the models that we're using, the TiVo models, I guess we refer to it, and the models that you all are using, um, are they templated over one another? In other words, some of the scenarios we're going to be looking at in terms of Mr. McCanney mentioned to, mentioned about spreading some of these things out or changing where, where, where the current CIP is. I'd like to see modeling of that, to see how the impact on, on the taxes. I mean, you, you, you've put 80 million across five years. If we wanted to change that scenario, our model or your model? Whose model would, would we use to, 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 to look at those?
I think you would use both. I mean, I think you could use ours, we're going to use ours as far as out our 10 years and how we push it out. But, I mean, we could incorporate some of the tax rates that Davenport's using in our model to, to make sure they mirror a little closer. I mean, you know, Thomas does look at the market and tries to also do his best at forecasting that. I mean, we could overlap some of that the same way. But I do know, as far as the 3% growth, that is what's in our forecast model right now on real estate. So, I do want to make sure that's, that they did, we did use the same growth rate on that.
If I, if I could, Brett and Mr. Chairman, hopefully we'll, maybe we haven't planned to do some really down and dirty, if you will, workshops where we can work these scenarios in real time and see the models work. Have you, you all there and, and our staff there so that we can start looking at some of these things.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, that would be helpful to me to make decisions about what the impact is of these changes.
Picking back on what he said, some projected revenue I would like. Well, because there are some things coming down the pike that could possibly, you know.
Be on the revenue source, yeah.
Exactly, so, yeah, I think that's a great idea.
We need to kind of take the, the ties off and, and get down, down to brass tacks and, and do some, do some, some hard work to look at some of these scenarios.
Certainly.
Thank you, Charla. Any more questions, comments?
Good job.
David Austin, thank you again for coming and, uh, guess we'll be in touch real soon, so. Thank you. Good morning, Charla.
One question, you are okay with them going ahead and doing the application process with VRA? Because they really need to do it this week.
Do we need a motion for that, Brett?
I mean, I don't know if you need a motion.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, just a straw vote, making sure everybody's okay. Again, you'll, you'll decide for sure next month.
Yeah, that doesn't lock you into anything. Oh, and there's no cost to apply.
Well, good, that's some good news.
And it doesn't lock you in, it's just starting the process.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sharla.
Please take care of that. Yeah, we got more bad news than good news, so take all the good news we can get.
If I have some more.
All right, that brings us to our first public comment, period. Three minutes for individuals, five minutes per group. Carl Schwendeman.
Hello, my name is Carl Schwendeman. I'm at 1727 Teresa Lane. I, I'd like to make a public comment about the post data center. I heard they want to build a $2.2 billion data center at the intersection of Page Road and Route 60. And, because I was at the public meeting for it and the developer of the data center said it was going to bring in like $10 million a year in new tax revenue for the county. And I was wondering, could the county take like 5 million of that and put it towards a special trust fund or a bond or something to fix Page Road and build Carter Boulevard? Because Page Road is really dilapidated and it, Page Road needs to be upgraded with shoulders and a sidewalk between, um, the data center and Walmart. And, um, Powhatan should use like half of the, uh, could use half of the new revenue to fix Page Road. Then, after Page Road is fixed, a little bit could be used for like other little project, road products in the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the audience who'd like to make a public comment, you can come forward this time. Not seeing any, I'm a closed public comment, period. That brings us to the consent agenda. Create a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, Mr. Kenny.
So, on the consent agenda, there was a board of supervisor meeting on December 18th, 2023, addressing a rezoning, or removing solar farms from conditional uses of the county to certain agricultural or industrial areas that the planning commission passed, but it was never taken up by the board at this time. I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we take that zoning ordinance up within the next 60 days.
Do you recall vote, Brett?
Uh, let's do one just to be safe. Mr. Nadi.
Aye.
Mr. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Mrs. Morset.
Aye.
Mr. McClellan.
Aye. Thank you, sir.
I will, uh, get with planning staff on that and we'll, uh, dust it off and bring it back to you all within 60 days.
60 days.
Mr. Chair. I may be out of order here completely. Can comment be made on a consent agenda item or should we just need to?
It should have been pulled off at the beginning.
So be it.
Yeah. Can I, uh, get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor. Consent agenda passes. That brings us to our first public hearing.
Yeah, uh, so, this is our annual re-adoption of, uh, the county and VDOT secondary six-year road improvement plan. We have Rebecca Worley, our resident engineer, here with us with this evening. If there's any questions, um, not identifying or attributing any specific project this time. We've talked about having maybe a workshop, uh, probably this summer to establish, uh, the board and the public's transportation priorities. So, we're just continuing to accumulate some six-year funding here, uh, put it in that budget. And then, once we identify those projects, we'll, uh, have another, uh, another update to the six-year plan to show exactly which projects and what order and, and what we're applying to them. So, again, not, not approving any specific projects tonight, just carrying that money forward.
Chair would like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
It's a hearing. Is there a public comment, uh, for, not for, for the public hearing? Carl. Carl Schwendeman. Yeah, yeah. Just for the public hearing.
For the six-year plan, could they make sure that they put the village, give the village, put some of the village sidewalk projects on the six-year plan? Because a lot of these federal and state grants, they need, they need like for the sidewalk projects to be officially on a five-year or six-year plan so that it's officially endorsed by the supervisors? Because it, it would give the projects a lot more credibility and getting more fund, it'll make it easier for them to get more funding, get funding if they're mentioned on the, on the five, on the six-year improvement plan, like, um, the Mann Road sidewalk extension, the, uh, sidewalk to the, from the Powhatan, from the Mann Road to the middle school and post office and the, and the, and the sidewalk, and the Shags Road sidewalk and the sidewalks going east to Rocky Oak Road and, and Academy in the food line.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Open up board comments now.
I'm just curious, you, you mentioned carrying funds forward. What, what, what funds and what's there now, what's being carried forward?
Uh, yeah. Swirly, do you, I know we spoke last week, I think, about that, but I did not jot down the number of what we have in total.
And what's SSYP?
Secondary.
It's your secondary six-year plan. Yep, so you've got two funding sources in your secondary six-year plan. The first is an unpaved road fund. So, it's state funding, um, that is distributed based on the number of lane miles of unpaved roads that Powhatan County has compared to other localities in Virginia. As we discussed at the dinner meeting, you don't have any that qualify, um, for. So, that fund is decreasing. There's still a little bit of funds left in it, um, kind of leftover from when you did have unpaved roads, but not a whole lot left. And then the other fund that's available is telecommunications fees, also called tele-fees. And those are funds that, um, VDOT collects for rental of telecommunications equipment in the right of way. And so, for Powhatan this year, for fiscal '25, between those two funds, it's a total of $86,251 that's available starting fiscal year '25, which would be starting July 1st, 2024. So, those are the funds that, um, Mr. Shard I mentioned currently. They're just projected to go to a kind of a temporary holding pot project that then you could redistribute at your discretion in future secondary six-year plans.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. Anybody has any questions from Rebecca while she's up here? Good. Thank you, Rebecca. Any more board comments?
I'd just say too, um, to Mr. Schwendeman's comment, those are the type of projects, absolutely, we would put on here. We just want to make sure we put them on there. So, we're working through it in a systematic fashion. I've seen other places I've worked, sometimes it's a wish list of just all your projects that will never realistically get done and that, we, we don't want that. We want projects that we do see a path forward on, whether it's, and likely, you know, it'd be a combination of some six-year funds, smart scale, CVTA money, uh, tap grants, other ways we'd pull stuff together. But at least that way, we'll put it in here and we won't put something in our plan that just would never happen. So, there'll be things that we can work towards them systematically and, and with a well-thought-out plan. But I think all of the ones he mentioned are absolutely things, uh, I think could end up in there.
I agree. All right, we had a motion, we had a second. Go call vote. Go call vote.
Mr. Nadi.
Aye.
Mr. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny. Mrs. Morset.
Aye.
Mr. McClellan.
Aye.
Brings us to our second public comment period. If anyone would like to speak during this time, please come forward. Not seen anyone, we close public comment period. County administrator comments.
No other comments this evening.
Board comments. Go ahead, Ms. Powers.
I'd like to make comment about the Parks and Rec, their bylaws. Just to report back to you all. A great deal of effort was was put into the, into looking those bylaws over and changing them, I think, for positive, specifically much better definition of the relationship between the director of Parks and Rec and the PrAC and also relationship to us in terms of her her function, which I think was great. Also clarified terms of office to make that more clear and also set a roadmap for new people coming into the PrAC, how to how to onboard those folks in a more constructive way. So it was, it was, a great deal of time was put in them. And I think that the PrAC and and staff there is to be commended because it was an excellent change to to those bylaws. And so I thank you for that. I have one other question, Brett. I know we we're faced with our minutes transcriber going to greener pastures or other pastures. And we, I think we got the December one. Yeah, how are we looking to get our minutes a little bit more current?
Yeah, so we we have somebody now working with us.
Okay, good.
Yeah. So I expect more to come on on your future board meetings to get us caught back up quickly.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Anyone else? Meeting adjourned.